I'm going to call the March 5th, 2024 regular scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the prayer and Commissioner Mobley to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Let's pray. God our Father in heaven, we come once again to God. Rhythm thanks unto you, Father, how you do the best, dust and watch over, and care for us, dear God. We thank you, God, for blessing. While we slumming and slept out last night, woke up this morning to a brand-new day. We thank you, God, for keeping us, oh God, through seen unseen danger that we went through this day. And God, we ask you, look on this board in a mighty way, dear God. Give us the strength and understanding, dear God, to do the thing that come before this board, dear God, and bless those who got us here today, oh God, that they would understand the things that we're doing, God, is for the betterment of this community, for this county, dear God. And God, you bless all our departments, look on our, look on our armed forces, God, look on all those, oh God, that protect us and keep us. And God will give you the praise and glory from Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's read it to the flag of the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will get started here. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February 20th, 2024 regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins to approve, a second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak tonight? Mr. Broders, Mr. Coke, we got multiple. Mr. Broders, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Keith Broders, 201 Rancher Street Northwest, Level, Florida. The thing that I want to mention today or talk a little bit about is something called representation. Think about your rights. The very most important right I believe that we have is the right to, the right to speak out and the right to be heard by our representatives. And one of the things I want to share with you tonight is that out of the 50 states in the United States, the three states that have the poorest percentage, the poorest ratio of representatives to the people they represent are California, Texas, and Florida. In Florida today, we have one representative in Tallahassee for every 180,000 people. The average state, the ratio is 50,001. We are desperately underrepresented. In 1968, we had 120 representatives in a population of 6,600,000. Today, we have a population just under 22 million, and we still have 120 representatives. So we are underrepresented greatly.
We're underrepresented greatly, and I think it's time that we had an opportunity to be represented properly in Tallahassee. I think we need, if you, if you, if we were as well represented today as we were in 1968, we'd have over 400 representatives, which means that virtually every community would have access to their own state legislator that they could, you now try to call and speak to your state legislator, and if you get him on the first call, it'll be a miracle. Just try it and see how, how easy it is to even, to even speak to them. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Broders. Mr. Coke, name and address for the record, please, sir.
That's Coke, John S., 1805 289th Road. Speaking as a reporter and a broadcaster, bring you up to date. In the recent edition of the Public Shorts, I told you that the radio station and the owners, the corporate owners in Bald Austin and Daytona have cut back even further. That was done 10 days later, when you had the last local newscast. Wayne was fired, and I'm down to $25 every two weeks. So I really don't exist either. So all you have out there right now is the salesman. Anything you hear on that radio station is national. Any DJ you hear on the radio now is, I don't even think God knows where they come from. There are no personnel out there. You've lost your radio station. The AM is operating illegally. You haven't had an AM transmitter out there for two years. 106.1 has a tower that is endangering the life of, of individuals, even though the statistics and chances are low that an airplane might hit it. But you do have emergency equipment there. I'm asking you, don't put any infrastructure out at Southern Stone Communications because there's nobody out there to man it. It's not going to be a question of if, gentlemen, when another storm hits, it's going to be when. Telephone and internet will go down. God bless the cooperative, but all their infrastructure are on poles. Yes, wind stream is underground. However, there is still a broadcast connection between internet, the way you get it, and the internet that it's produced. So we are in danger. That AM station was put out there by the federal government a long time ago when we had to worry about nukes. Well, we still have to worry about nukes, but we've got other dangers. And those AM stations were put across the state of Florida for a reason. Gentlemen, we are in trouble. Gentlemen, I am the only reporter that has an opposing view to the existing media that you do have, and I'm getting old. And if there's anybody that would like a business, I'll give it to you. I need somebody to take my place. I'm getting old. Statistically, I have two and a half years left. I doubt that, but statistically, and when I go, you won't have anybody else. I am worry sick. I am still angry. I'm still depressed, and I really, really need you to start talking to your representatives that are higher up and get the federal government involved. I don't want the federal government involved, but the FCC must be involved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, listeners.
Thank you, Mr. Coke.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, Mr. John Coke and I, we've had several conversations, and I know you guys know what we went through with the storm and getting the PSAs out, and it was a little troublesome, you know, not having something in place. I agree with what John said. We, and I don't know where we go with this. I know Greg's worked on it. I think you've worked on it, having some meetings with the EOC guys, but in the event, we do have another hurricane. It can happen. I mean, we, we need to have a better plan when it comes to getting the public service announcements out there. So just, I just bring that up so it stays on everybody's mind fresh that moving forward, but as these things happen and we lose our locals and things of that nature, how do we get that message out and how do we relay that to our public? So.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we'll move along to the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Clerk, constitutional officers. Any constitutional officers present wishing to speak tonight? Seeing none, we'll move along to really short agenda tonight. Staff items. Any staff?
That's scary.
Well, that's just because he's probably going to load up next, two weeks from now. Any staff?
Some of the consultants wanted to speak, I think. North Florida might have wanted to speak, the D.
Okay. North Florida, professional services, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Scott just put you on the spot, sounded like.
I don't have a lot this evening. We've normally been giving you an update at the first meeting of the month, which this is what it is, but tonight's update's pretty short. South 80th, 139th, still under construction. Greenway Trail is under construction as well. 76th Street is out to bid. Bid's supposed to be received on the 19th. So basically, that's it. All the other stuff is pretty much in process. We've just been assisting staff for some of the grants, the planning grant for the master plans out there. We've been working with them, trying to get that finalized and all that, so we can finalize all the master plan documents for the catastrophic. So that's all I have. I shall have something for me.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bailey?
I ask you every time he brings it up. So, once we get the bid back, how quick can we start on 76th Street?
Pretty much, yeah, as far as you follow the county procurement procedures, as soon as you can get the contract executed, we can get the contractor out there. Everything's good to go.
Yeah. I appreciate y'all's hard work on that. I know it's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other consultants in the room who want to speak? Good. All right, we'll move along to commissioner items. Any commissioner items? None. Everybody's quiet as a church mouse. County attorney. Well, I know he'll talk. County attorney will always talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I do have a few things to bring before the board. The first, the DOT had been doing some work over by the County Road 252 Bridge. Last year, we gave them some property to allow them to work on it, free and clear. And anyway, they've finished the work that they're doing. They need to deed it back to us. Those deeds have been prepared, but we need to be able, we need to accept the deeds for the transfer to be valid. So I would appreciate board action to, a motion to accept the deeds from the Department of Transportation regarding the County Road 252 and surrounding area on behalf of the county.
That was some of the right-of-way we had to give to them because of the erosion occurring around the bridge, of the new bridge.
Correct.
So they went in, we had to deed that to them. They turned around and repaired it, fixed it.
Now they're deeding it.
And now they're giving it back to us. Now the issue's been resolved.
Yes, sir.
So you'll need a motion for that.
Yeah, I need a motion to accept the deeds.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you. The second thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is in front of you all is, you'll see an economic development agreement for, between the county and RJ Investing, as well as an amendment to some utility easements. As the people in the audience may recall, back in the first meeting of January, at that meeting, we approved an update to the economic development agreement with RJ Investing. It's also known as Project Wave. After we executed our half of it, but before the developer executed, they sent it to their attorney, and there were some issues regarding language. I will go ahead and represent to the board that it is non-substantive changes, but anyway. So I would just ask the board to vote to approve. This has been approved for signature on their end. Substantively, it's identical. We just need to re-execute, and it meets with what their lawyers wanted to do. But there's no change substantively between the agreements.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Morrison on this particular item?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The third I have, Mr. Chairman, is over on 184th Street, which is in Commissioner White's district. We're finally moving forward with our land acquisition projects in that area. As the boards are aware, I've got money in trust to go ahead and procure certain, the right-of-way as it becomes available. We've hit one snag with parcel owner, Brian, with the parcel owned by Brian Veitch, V-E-I-T-C-H, and this is regarding parcel ID number 21-04-15EAST00876-001000. And essentially, what it is, is the strip of land that we're taking to extend the right-of-way. He's got a very nice ornate fence there, which is going to have to be moved now that we're putting it into, now that's going to become county right-of-way. He's not opposed to selling to the county. He doesn't want us to have to do eminent domain or any of that. He is requesting that we pay to move the gate because it's our fault that it's moving. As we discussed before when we were doing the land acquisition, this is the sort of thing that I would bring before the board if it was something unusual. So that's what I'm doing. He sent several estimates. The one that kind of landed in the median was the cost of $12,000 because it's got to be destroyed and then rebuilt. And so that can, combined with the property offer for the value of the land that we'll be taking is $1,200. So it came to $13,200. I did speak to Administrator Scott regarding the issue, but, because it's within his spending authority, but we mutually agreed to bring that before the board, just because this is the sort of issue. One, to let y'all know that we are moving forward and doing these things, and this is the sort of thing also to let the public know we're, we're moving forward. But we did want you all to be the ones to give the approval, if it was okay, to formalize the making of that offer and move forward with that part of the land acquisition.
Does, on the, on the contractor selected to do the work, would the county pay that contractor directly?
No. What we're, what I'm doing is, and you've got to remember too, this is in the context of negotiations. So he provided multiple estimates from fence companies, and that's where kind of the median was, one, was. But it would be writing a check to him.
He'd be responsible for procuring the contract.
Right. And when I spoke with him about, and I confirmed it again today because I knew I was going to come before this board, is I said, we're going to do two things if we're going to cut a check for this amount, because number one, it'll be the deed, but two, you're going to execute a contract which says you're actually moving the fence. Because the most important thing to us is that we have that right-of-way free and clear, and we do recognize that tearing down your fence is, like, this is what happens when you take private property. So, but he understands that, and he understands he's going to be responsible for it, and we'll agree to a certain number of days, but we're at least months out before the project getting started, even if I got all the right-of-way tomorrow, which I'm not. So, you know, it'll be 90, 120 days, but he'll have it moved in plenty of time for the project to move forward.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Perkins.
And so in that agreement, the county will be held homeless from anything from Tampa, just order to pay for $13,000.
So essentially, 100%. So we're, for lack of, to be real blunt, we give you the money. We now own that land, and it's your responsibility to move that fence, and it darn well will be moved by the time the county's going to be there. If not, he'll make himself responsible for damages. I don't foresee it being a problem. He was, again, he was very cooperative, but he wanted to be, there's other ways he could approach this if he didn't want to be cooperative.
I'm telling him we appreciate him being cooperative.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner White.
Mr. Morrison, is there any other hangups on that road other than that one?
I have a couple of people still who, the offers, I think it'll all be resolved, but people who just, you know, maybe they want a little bit more. I can work that out with Mr. Scott. This is the sort of one, though, because it was such a step up in price, and it's paying, for lack of a better phrase, for a capital expenditure on behalf of the property owner, where I thought, we thought it would be appropriate to bring before the board. But I don't anticipate any major issues with getting this taken care of and done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Anybody else? Commissioner Mobley?
John had a question.
No, no, I, 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 I'm cleared.
You're good, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that the property, I wanted to understand the publication, that the property owner will be responsible for having the work done, because the county may.
Yeah, he's going to sign a contract that stipulates all of that, and then a time period in which it should be done.
And, and, and your attorney made that quite clear. More reasons. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And in a slight deviation, simply because he'll be coming to my office for everything. Most of the time, I refer the, we would ask Mr. Scott to have the authority to offer the, make the offer and do all the executions for acceptance. Given the situation, I'd asked that the board give me that authority, just for the practicalities of him coming to my office to get the check and to sign the paper. So I would ask for a motion to authorize Adam Morrison, his county attorney, to offer the $13,200 to Mr. Veitch for the aforementioned parcel number, and if accepted on behalf, by the property owner, authority to enter into a contract for him to remove the fence from the right-of-way, as well as to execute the documents for the transfer of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrison, anything else?
One more, just to.
I knew you, I could count on you to talk.
I saw the agenda was short, so I wrote my own. Last one is, something's come to the attention of the various county attorneys. Florida statute 951.26 calls for a public safety coordinating council, which has been on the books for years. We've never done it, and it was when we found out about it. And it's a council that's supposed to meet, and it can be done on a county basis. It can also be done by an inter-local agreement, so you don't have to have one county be responsible for everything, because it involves the state attorney, the public defender, the judges, like, everybody. So I've spoken with my counterparts in the various counties throughout the circuit. We're working on an inter-local agreement to, so that way we only have to meet once, circuit-wide, once per year, so that, to minimize the amount of work it's going to do. Again, we haven't done it for years, but when somebody pointed out that we needed to do it, it's a shall, we got to get it done. I just wanted to get you guys up to speed as to that was the angle I'm taking. Unless one of y'all had a strong objection to us doing it on a circuit-wide basis, I wouldn't think that y'all would. But now, if you could let me know. And then, just FYI, now's not the time, but one of you all will have to be a representative to that board, and you guys can play 1, 2, 3, not it at another meeting.
No, I'm chairman. I'm definitely nominated. It won't be me.
No, the chairman has, like, that role.
Chairman's on enough.
That's above our pay grade.
I'm on enough.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Additional agenda items? I think we have a couple that come in. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. The first one is a Department of Transportation grant agreement. We got it last minute. We need to get that authorized and turned back around. This for the rail crossings appropriation we received last year for $500,000. The county will not have any expense in, in the process, but it's to fix the rail crossings, so it's a commercial-grade crossing, not a residential-grade crossing. This on 169th, and my motion is to approve, or my recommendation is to approve it, that's right.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Scott?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
The second one is for a rural infrastructure grant agreement of amount of $764,601 for the construction of sewer system improvements on 68th Terrace. I've been working on that project for quite a while. We got some, some additional funding to help us do that. We got the grant agreement, and we need to execute that to make that project move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anybody any questions for Mr. Scott?
No.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Clerk. Number seven on the agenda, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott?
First, I'd like to apologize for having additional agenda items. That's the first time we've done that in the past year or so. But last-minute information from the state required us to go ahead and move on those and to get those out of the way. It's been an interesting day today. We had a really good meeting with Waste Management at lunchtime, with Ms. Rafferty, Chairman and myself, with Waste Management folks, talking through processes and things. It was positive, but we're still working on what are the options we have moving down the road. Our contract's through 2000, I'm sorry, 2026, so we got plenty of time, but it was a positive conversation we had today. The last meeting, we talked about fuel and, let me back up. Additionally, today, we had a lot of talk between us and Tallahassee, different emails and conversations back and forth with our appropriations. The legislature has finished making sausage, and so last year, we received, I'm going to throw some numbers out there, but it has to be approved by the governor. It's just the proposed budget. Last year, we received over $5 million in appropriations for infrastructure projects. This year, we're looking at about $8.5 million in, in projects. Again, that's to be approved by the governor, but it was an active day today in finalizing everything, getting clarity on a few last-minute things. So we're excited about what our options are moving forward, but anyway, it's been, appreciate the staff and all the work they've done to make all these things come together. So it takes everybody pitching in to get the information together.
Absolutely. We appreciate y'all working on that, continuing to build the momentum. You know, five to eight, doesn't seem like a lot, but that's a lot.
Right.
So we'll certainly take it.
Thank you. The only other thing I had was, I was going to talk to you about the, what the research we found in the local fuel vendors and how the county is acquiring their fuel, and through the day, that was just not on my radar. And I've got it all written up. We may not put that together and bring that to you next time. Apologize for not having it tonight.
Fair enough. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
No, sir.
Gang, guys, we're almost done.
It's good.
Last item on the agenda, board members' inquiries, requests, and comments. We'll start with, we'll start with Commissioner Hale. We've been starting on the left. We'll start with the right.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Perkins is upset about that.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
He's kidding. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I just obviously start off by thanking our employees. I mean, you guys know, and I try to point this out every meeting, we're only as good as those folks. They work hard for us, things, putting these agendas together, but, you know, our road graders, our dump truck drivers, our tree trimmers, I've been out visiting with them all, and they're trying to get caught up, still storm-related stuff, but I mean, they're making great advancements, and I just appreciate them because they, they do a great job for us. Talking about the storm-related, obviously, we're still going through some issues there. I know, I'm sure some of you guys, like myself, are still trying to work and help folks get back into their homes. I won't point nobody out, but I have someone here tonight that is very unfortunate, has lost their home during that storm, and Mr. Greg and Matt out there at the Economic Council, everyone's trying to help us and help those folks out, and it's, it's just devastating. But again, we'll work our way through it, and I appreciate the patience of the community. And last but not least, I'm going to take Jimmy's thunder here. We went to a North Florida Economic Development Meeting at Camp Anderson on Friday. It was supposed to be a few hours, ended up being a whole day, and that's sometimes how they go. Y'all know that. But it was well worth it. All the counties that were there were very appreciative of the presentation that Jimmy and myself gave, and I was glad that they gave us the opportunity to. And, and we did boast Team Swanee County and the things that we got going on here. And again, I just wanted to get that out, steal Jimmy's thunder because he's not here this evening. But, but it was a great event. It really was. And just appreciate, you know, the Cross City folks that were there, the Dixie County folks that were very inviting and hostile, hospitality to us, and just a good event. It really was. I mean, it was, it was held in a barn there. I don't know if y'all been there, right on the river, and it's just a spectacular place to be. So I think Mr. Perkins was there, too. He showed up as well. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. He thought I was going to forget you, but thank you.
No, I'll go, I'll go correct you.
You go correct me. That's right.
I'll go correct him. Yeah, sure was.
He was just way but token, Mr. Mobley.
And I will tell you, we, we were talking about Project Wave, and, and we're going to have a big thing on that, folks, and I'm telling you, it's really good for our community. It fits our, our, our economy. It fits our, our folks here and just, I don't know, I look out here and I see some folks here, some good friends of mine, and I just, I know they'll be proud of what we're working on, but I had the hat, the Project Wave hat, and it's been a lucky hat, because as y'all know, we, we kind of lost that project to another neighboring county. We got it back.
For a minute.
Yeah, for a minute. And through, you know, just staying in contact with these folks and doing the things that we do as Team Swanee, it came back to us. But I had held on to that hat. The story thing the man gave is when he said, no, I'm not interested in Swanee County, and he left. And I got this little cheap hat, you know, and I'm thinking, well, that's a crazy departing gift, you know? But I held on to it. I held on to it, and I, you know, I did different things with it, and taking pictures, you know, all around Swanee County and neighboring counties, and saying, hey, you need to be here. You need to be here. And I'd show the hat and the picture or whatever. So I was telling everybody this meeting, it was my lucky hat. Well, I got out and walked off to get something and come back, and one of them other commissioners from another county had stole my hat. And nobody would tell. I think, Mr. Perkins, actually found it for. He ran it down for me. Anyhow, it was a great event, and everyone works hard. And like I tell them at those meetings and the things that we do here, it's not just to benefit Swanee County. I mean, you know, we got folks that travel to their counties for jobs, and they travel here for jobs, so it's, it's definitely a tri-county thing. I mean, it's our Swanee Valley area, so just proud of it. That's all. Thanks, I was turning to Jimmy for a minute. Sorry.
We appreciate you, Mr. Perkins, attending.
Yes.
And representing Swanee County. Thank you. And Jimmy and Chris was.
Chris was there, absolutely.
Thank them for that. Commissioner White?
Just briefly, I've met with the hatches again on the mine. I think we're getting closer on an agreement there. Still some more details to work out, some surveys to be done, some calculations to be made before I can bring that back before you guys to look at. But just letting you know, it's moving forward. Also, we went to Hamilton County today to their board meeting for the regional utility. They kind of wanted me and Mr. Ford, Commissioner Ford, to go and explain to their board what this was all about. And so me and Commissioner Ford went up there this morning and, and took care of that and explained that deal to them, and so. care of that and explained that deal to them, and so I don't know where they're at on it, but maybe they're joining as well, so just letting you know that's, that's moving forward as well.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Appreciate you going to talk one to them for us.
Absolutely.
You want to go next, Mr. Mobley?
Yep. Thank you.
He senses down there fussing, we'll let him go last.
No, we appreciate our staff. We appreciate the public for coming out, and we are missing one fellow tonight, Mr. Bart.
Yes, sir.
And we need to keep him in our prayers.